Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna do a statement from the Board President. Unfortunately, Mr. Saunders, our Board President, is, has taken ill. So I'll be presiding the meeting in my capacity as Vice President. So in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, PL 1975, C231, S1 amended in 2006, C70, S2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on May 14th, 2024 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on May 20th, 2024. Mission Statement: Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. Roll Call.
Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Ms. Lesinski?
Here.
Dr. Moxuth?
Here.
Dr. Penna?
Here.
Ms. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we've got quite a bit of stuff to go through this meeting, starting with the public budget hearing and presentation by Ms. Thea Jackson Byers, and then voting on our agenda as well. So the regular agenda items. So why don't we start with that? Ms. Brown? Public Budget Hearing 2025, school year. Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. You know what? Before we do any of that, how about we do some really cool stuff and recognize the students and the educators for this month? How about that? Okay. Let's kick this off on the good foot.
Who's gonna start first? Who's going first?
Hi, Ms. Lauren Jackson. Sorry. Dr. Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Javino. Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Schultz, the Principal of Thurgood Marshall Elementary School. And tonight, for our Student of the Month, I am very excited to present a fifth-grade young lady with our award. This student is someone who comes to school every day trying her best and has been making extremely wonderful decisions as we near the end of the school year. Her teachers, Mrs. Ferber, Ms. Cortez, and Mr. Hamilton have raved about her teamwork and support of other students, and she is always willing to lend a helping hand to any staff or student that is in need in Thurgood Marshall. So joined tonight by her mother, wonderful siblings, and bestie, Janila. Ms. Zaira Faris, please come up and get your award. And Mom, if you want to come in the picture or take the picture, you are welcome to. And fun fact, today's Zaira told me that she loves doing crafts and wants to be a judge when she grows up. Yes. So your backpack is filled with tons of supplies to do both of those things. Congratulations, sweetheart.
I'm sorry. I was about to take some of this up here. Right here.
And now for our Staff of the Month. The Thurgood Marshall Elementary School Staff of the Month is a fourth-grade teacher who is loved throughout the building. She has taken the initiative of leading our Sunshine Committee and truly bringing sunshine to our school in all that she does. Ms. Mills is a teacher that is so dedicated, even when she is homesick, she is checking in on her students and communicating with families. She is, of course, a team player and just overall supports everyone in the building. Ms. Mills, we are so lucky to have you. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. I had the honor and privilege of introducing the Bradley Elementary School Student of the Month, who happens to be a kindergarten student. Her name is Salah Gunter. Give her a round of applause. Salah is a wonderful student. She has an amazing vocabulary. She is a great friend to everyone. She got a 93, get it? A 93 on her math, Lincoln Form C assessment. Yeah, that's big. And a 100 on her ELA, Lincoln Form C. Salah has a love of learning and was so excited this spring when she was able to, she could read a book with the titles and stories. We are so proud of you. Congratulations, Salah. We have a couple things, your teachers, her teachers are here. We have some good things. Here goes, there you go. They also gave you some good things. And of course, we always have to represent for Bradley Elementary because we are the Bradley Elementary School. So we got some, we gave you some spiritware. And Mom, I know Mother's Day has passed, but you, it's Mother's Day every day. Thank you for blessing us with Salah. At this time, it is an honor and privilege to introduce the Bradley Elementary School Staff Member of the Month. That is a first-grade teacher. Her name is Ms. Corinne Boback. When I tell you Ms. Corinne Boback, we love her. She wears her heart on her sleeve. When I tell you she might even have a difficult class, but she, you would never know it the way she comes to school every day. We love you. Thank you so much, Ms. Boback. We appreciate everything that you do.
All right. Good evening. All right. So today's theme for me and my Staff of the Month and Student of the Month is reverence. For our Student of the Month, this young man is revered by his peers, by his teachers, by the community. His spirit is what shines the brightest, but his growth, literally in stature and academics, has been amazing. This student is a seventh grader by the name of Julian Aguilar Castro. Come on, bud. He's coming up here with dad. Yup. Come on, dad. Yeah, he got taller than me. That wasn't hard to do. Good job, buddy.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
He's right here.
One, two, three.
And unfortunately, our Staff of the Month couldn't make it, but he is someone the community knows very well. He is also highly regarded in the community, in the school, in the district, our head of security, Mr. Kwan Greer. Very fortunate to have him as my lead in the security team. Truly, truly, we are safer because of him. So shout out to Officer Kwan Greer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Grasso from the high school.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. I am here from the high school, and the first person I'm gonna present award with is our Student of the Month. This person is a junior at Asbury Park High School. He was a member of the football, basketball, and baseball teams. In addition to sports, he was also the school photographer for our yearbook. Quayshawn continually volunteers his time ensuring all of our activities run smoothly. You can catch him doing laundry for athletic department, reffing our student versus staff games, or one and one, or selling tickets for a fundraiser. We can always count on him to be reliable. He is always the first student to lend his time to help our school events. This summer, this student will be doing an internship as a camp counselor for the Boys and Girls Club. Our Student of the Month at the high school is Quayshawn Johnson Church. Come on up.
Shaw, look at you, man.
Mom?
Mom?
We gotta get you too.
You did.
There you go.
Ms. Lauren Golden is a teacher who highlights the positive in all students. She consistently speaks with a strength-based mindset and is flexible in providing opportunities for student success in and outside of her classroom. Lauren is one of the most genuine, caring, and hard-working staff members at Asbury Park High School. Her passion for the students and her willingness to go above and beyond every single day is unmatched. Ms. Golden works tirelessly to create relevant, rigorous activities for her students, days in and days out. She just couldn't wait. She's extremely enthusiastic and a crucial part of the teaching staff at Asbury Park High School. She does not go unnoticed, and you will not find a bigger heart in Asbury Park. Ms. Lauren Golden, Staff Member of the Month.
I know.
That's Josh.
Yes, Josh.
Here you go.
Thank you.
And congratulations to all our staff members and especially our Students of the Month. Great job.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. So now the presentation of our 2025 budget by Ms. Ivy Brown.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. As we know, this is the final year of the S2 bill. So our 2025 adequacy budget, it consists of the $43 million minus the proposed local taxes, and that will equal our equalization aid. Again, this started in 2019, the 2020 school year, with the amount of percentages that the state was gonna take from us. So 2425 being the last school year that they will take the bulk of our state aid. I presented 2324 and 2425 to show you the state aid that we received, and 2024 was to the left was $20 million. The adequacy aid, which was $17 million, and they considered that we were overaided by $2.5 million. As you can see, in 2025, there's nothing in the green because we are not overaided. They pretty much took the bulk of our money.
Congratulations.
Our state aid history, you know, going back from 2015, the amount of state aid that we received was $55 million, down to 2025, what they're proposing to give us, $16 million. So overall, we have lost $38 million. Considering, you know, the amount of money that we have lost, we have worked tirelessly to maintain instructional programs for our children that they're not losing out instruction, instruction time, you know, as well as giving them new programs, offering the after-school program, you know, as much as we can, so these kids are not hurting, you know, in the classroom and after school as well. Our local fair share, starting again from 2015 to propose now, the light blue is what the state projects that the town should be paying their local fare, to the darker blue as to what we're proposing, you know, the taxpayers to pay. The adjustments that we had to make this year, we had to withdraw from our maintenance reserve to help support the facility improvements. We also increased our revenue projection of extraordinary aid based on historical trend. Extraordinary aid is the extra services that our students receive. This year, we did a big reduction in force of 34 staff members. And also a big savings that we're doing, the central office will be moving to Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Middle School, so we're saving $270,000. The components of our budget is composed of three funds. So the big operating budget you'll see is $59 million. Grants, revenues that we get, you know, from outside sources, the federal government, equals $16 million. So we have $75 million to run the school district. And look at it in a pie chart, 42% of our budget is for salary, 15 benefits, which is smaller than charter school tuition. This year, you know, as you guys been hearing every month, we're still fighting, we're still gonna, we're college achieve. We wanna make sure that every student that they're claiming is our resident, we're gonna make sure and verify. So we are working with them. Probably next week, we are gonna sit house over there. This week, they have been coming little by little to the parent center to make sure that we are verifying their residency. Do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah. Let me put back up that last chart. I want everyone to realize what this district has spent and how it's spent. And one of the realities we have to look at is that everyone in this state is asking for financial assistance to run their school districts. The state has come in with S2 and said Asbury Park hasn't been paying their fair share, property tax-wise. And we have to understand what we're doing and what we're looking to do as a community. We have to, we have to view our choices and decisions based off nothing more than what is the best situation to educate the children in our community. We have the brightest, and I believe, and I've talked to them, I see them in this, in this state. But are they given everything that they deserve? No. And when I walk into any board meeting, any finance meeting, any meeting, that is my total objective, is to find the best that we can get, what they deserve, and, and work on that. And I'm fighting tirelessly. The state has helped us, our Senator Vin Capel, our assembly people, I've talked to other legislators in the state, and they, they, they understand the same thing. This S2 program was one of the worst ever programs, and we were slighted because of issues in, in, in the calculations of schooling. But now we go to this chart. One of the biggest things is that 22% goes to charter schools, and I have no problem with ever asking anyone to make a choice about where their education is. My mother made it for me, and we have to look at what is the best decision that a parent makes for the child. I now, being part of this Asbury Park School District, believe we, under restructuring, under focus, will be the best option for any of these kids in this, in this district. But we're paying 22% to a charter school that is paying its CEO almost $700,000. $700,000. That is our tax money because we're paying for him to come to our district and not to give any extraordinary measures that make us look different or even distract from what we're doing. But we also have to understand that our staff, our reputation, and the quality of education depends on us. And I, and I've told charter schools, I want our kids back because I want to give them the best option for their lives. And I think we're gonna do that. We all, we also looking at 11% of our district's funding is going out for kids that we can't service. And this board is gonna have to reflectively sit down and look at how that we can better serve our district on students that we may have to come up with something different. So we fight every day, and a lot of people don't know what this fight is about. It should be simply the kids in this district. I believe we still have to fight with the state to get more funding. I think if they understand where we're going, they will cooperate. We're not looking to mismanage anything. We're actually looking to move forward. So I'm asking this board to come together, to focus on one ultimate decision. It's not about anybody else. It's about the children in this district and how to make sure that we can accommodate what Howell has, what Freehold has, with all those science tech schools, we can do the same thing. And I also expect the parents to understand, we're gonna expect a lot from them. And I tell everybody that. I expect every, I respect a lot from everybody. We're gonna be talking about this budget, and a lot of people are not gonna be happy with the decisions we make. And they're always open to ask me why I make a decision or what I do. But we're gonna focus to try to get as much back in this district or to find other sorts of revenue, of funding. I was at the council meeting last night, and I, they, they're talking about bringing in a special improvement district, which would create more revenue. There's other revenue sources that we can tap into, investments and grants. So we're, we're trying to lend our thought to everything that will improve this district. And like I said, please, understand, this board is supposed to make the decisions because we are elected to do that and hold us accountable for everything because we are the final choice in this district as by state law. So please, just, just understanding, like I said, some of the conversations that may go on, some things you guys don't know about. One person told me, they didn't know we paid the charter schools. Yes, we do. Y'all can see, 22% go to charter schools. We're paying for people not to do the service that we're expected to do, and I will not tolerate that. So thank you.
Before I open up to the public, does anybody else on the board have any comments, questions, anything? Raise your hand.
Hi, I'd like to make an announcement from...
If it's on that, this is just on the budget?
Oh, on the...
Yeah. Let me just say that I, I agree with, with what Tracy Rogers said. I do wanna thank Mr. Javino and the staff that has worked tirelessly to try to do what's best for the kids and try to do what's best for this budget. It's, it's a thankless job when it, when it comes to, you know, having to, you know, raise taxes and, and, and make sure that we can get some money back. But we were able to get back $1.8 million via the legislation, and I can tell you that the folks that also in the public, in the community, that reached out to their legislators, the only way we were able to get some of that money back, about 45% of the cut funds from this year, was because you made your voices heard. So I wanted to thank the public as well in terms of reaching out and being a part of this fight, as well as our legislators who, we're in a pretty tough battle. So...
I have a question.
Yeah.
What is the tax increase this year for an average home in Asbury Park? Usually, we go by $500,000. What's gonna be the yearly increase this year? Just so people have an idea.
No, I can email that to you. I didn't have that one. I don't have it on me. I just have like what we're proposing, which is $6 million more than what we proposed last year. But I can email you the estimate of what it will cost per homeowner on an average home.
Okay. So I'm gonna open up for any public questions, comments, anything. So ladies and gentlemen, under the code, the board is required to have a public hearing concerning the budget. This is the public hearing concerning the budget. So to the extent that anybody would like to make a comment, we ask that you approach the lectern and, and make your comment. You're gonna have three minutes to make your comment. Again, this is on the budget only. You will have an opportunity later on in the meeting to make other comments, but this is the budget hearing.
Hello? Sorry. Good evening. My name is Arva Council. I live at 302 Third Avenue, Asbury Park, right down the street. I don't wanna piggyback off of what Mr. Rogers said. You said that you want to have the right services for our kids here in Asbury Park. There was the right services for our kids here in Asbury Park. People who sat at this table and neglected to give our kids the services, like my son, he has IEP, and reading was taken away when the schedule got changed. That's neglect. You understand what I'm saying? So you want the services to be back? You need to put the right people in place to service our kids that have behaviors and IEPs. At this time, you don't have people in place that can. And right now, my son is not in school because of that. He's a home instructor, and I'm taking him out the district because this district cannot service him. So you need to put the right teachers and people in place to service kids with IEPs. And a charter school does not take our kids that have IEPs. They cannot service our kids. So at the end of the day, the charter school does not service our kids, especially kids with IEP. I can't send my son here because they don't have the right things to service him. So technically, charter school does not service our kids, not gives our kids the right education and not serves our kids properly. So you need to bring the right people in place. Self-contained in the middle school is not there anymore. You need to bring it back because kids that have IEPs need to be in self-contained. They don't need to be in the hallways changing this schedule and that schedule. It's not good for them. So what you need to do, you need to figure out what teachers you are bringing back that could service our kids with IEPs. Because you say that, you understand? You don't understand when I go through and I'm at the table fighting for my son. You're not in the trenches with me. So you don't understand what I go through when I'm at the table fighting for him to make sure he gets...
So to the extent that anybody would like to make a comment, we ask that you approach the lectern and and make your comment. You're going to have three minutes to make your comment. Again, this is on the budget only. You will have an opportunity later on in the meeting to make other comments, but this is the budget hearing.
Good evening. Hello? Sorry. Good evening. My name is Arva Council. I live at three oh two Third Avenue, Asbury Park, right down the street. I don't want to piggyback off of Mr. Rogers said. You said that you want to have the right services for our kids here in Asbury Park. There was the right services for our kids here in Asbury Park. People who sat at this table neglected to give our kids the services. Like my son, he has I E P and reading was taken away when the schedule got changed. That's neglect. You understand what I'm saying? So you want the services to be back? You need to put the right people in place to service our kids that have behaviors and I E Ps. At this time, you don't have people in place that can. And right now, my son is not in school because of that. He's a home instructor and I'm taking him out the district because this district cannot service him. So you need to put the right teachers and people in place to service kids with I E Ps. And a charter school does not take our kids that have I E Ps. They cannot service our kids. So at the end of the day, the charter school does not service our kids, especially kids with I E P. I can't send my son here because they don't have the right things to service him. So technically, charter school does not service our kids, not giving our kids the right education and not service our kids properly. So you need to bring the right people in place. Self-contained in the middle school is not there anymore. You need to bring it back. Because kids that have I E Ps need to be in self-contained. They don't need to be in the hallways changing this schedule and that schedule. It's not good for them. So what you need to do, you need to figure out what teachers you are bringing back that could service our kids with I E Ps. Because you say that, you understand? You don't understand when I go through and I'm at the table fighting for my son. You're not in the trenches with me. So you don't understand what I go through when I'm at the table fighting for him to make sure he get what he needs. So you need to come and sit at the table with me to understand what my kids that have I E P needs. I'm in the trenches every day. So you need to bring the teachers back that can service our kids that have I E Ps.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have any comment from from email or anything like that, Ms. Brown? No?
Would the state monitor have anything to say about some of these things with the budget?
Well, given the loss in state aid and the free balance available, this was a very hard budget to put together. I believe it does meet the definition of thorough and efficient education. And it's been it's been it's been a work in progress since I got here because we had a number of different people working on it. And I think the million eight seventy-six will help restore some staffing and or programs, but it's not going to restore everything that was that was deducted from the budget. And this is this was a hard budget to put together and and next year is going to be just as hard, if not harder.
Any of our other board members would like to have a conversation or talk because I think we we should. I think everyone should have to say because this is what we're supposed to be doing. And just to put a word out, we don't the board doesn't get paid. There was a question at a meeting. We don't get paid for this. But we we're at it and I'm at it in my head almost twenty-four hours a day. So.
And just really quick, because I I look back on the information regarding per home. So the average median home is is five hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred five dollars in Asbury Park. And it looks like the increase per year, the increase per month is fifty-seven dollars. Increase per year is six hundred eighty-nine dollars. Now, that's everything. That doesn't include the one point eight million dollars that we we're getting back. So we just have to do the math on that. But just as a baseline, where what what we're looking at here, so. Okay. Do I have to make a motion to to close this public? Okay, so we're closing it. And going to make next on the agenda is a presentation by Mrs. Thea Jackson Byers of the Bradley School. S S D S period one, S Y twenty-three twenty-four.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, we're good. All right, Murphy's Law did to it. Good evening. My name is Thea Jackson Byers. I will be presenting the S S D S report for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. If this just to let you know that this is just the first report in period, which goes from September twenty twenty-three to December twenty twenty-three. So this is just the span of a couple of months. When you board members should have a copy of this report. Does everybody have a copy of it? Do you have a copy of it? Oh, isn't it a little? Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Here it comes. In the report, in this report, you will see incidents that this is going to give you an explanation of the S S D S terms. You have the incidents totals include violence, vandalism, substances, weapons, and H I B confirmed. You will have vandalism, which includes arson, computer trespassing, damage to property, false public alarm, theft slash trespassing. You'll have violence, which include assault, fight, kidnapping, robbery, extortion, sexual assault, contact, threats, simple and criminal. Other incidents leading to removal, when you see other in the report, that we are talking about disciplinary removals and defined as instances on which a student is removed from his or her educational setting, placement for disciplinary purposes, including in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, expulsion, removal or removal to another educational setting. So I just wanted to give you an explanation of the S S D S terms. Uh-oh, not moving, of course. Uh-oh, it froze. Okay, no problem. We are going, yep, it froze. If you go to the next slide, which is in your packet, it's going to it's the district report. Yep, thank you. The district report, yep, for the period. This is for the current school totals. We have at the Asbury Park High School, we had thirteen incidents. Other, we had seventy-five. We had no H I B. Just be mindful that this is just for the first reporting period. M L K, eight incidents, twenty other, zero H I B. Bradley Elementary, zero incidents, zero other, zero H I B. T M E S, one incident, one other, and zero H I B. Of course. For the previous school year, so we're talking about the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three period. At the Asbury Park High School, we had twenty-four incidents. We had thirty other, zero H I B. M L K, it was six, one other, one H I B. Bradley Elementary, zero incidents, zero other, zero H I B. T M E S had zero incidents, one other, and zero H I B. The total for the district totals, the incidents were thirty during that time last year and thirty-two for other. Now we're going to break down by each of the schools. For the high school, we're going to begin with the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three period. They had for the incidents, they had twenty-four incidents for the first period. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year, we had thirteen. They have their incidents went down by eleven, eleven incidents. Other, they had for the first time for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, it was forty-five. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, it was seventy-five. They had an increase of thirty incidents of other. H I B, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, one. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, zero. And they actually, we went down one incident for H I Bs for the Asbury Park High School. So we're going to go now to M L K. For the first period, the incidents was four. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, four incidents. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, eight incidents. The trend is an increase of four. And other, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, two. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty. There has been an increase of eighteen. H I B, zero. H I B for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, four, zero, and then zero for the last period, the trend. Bradley Elementary School, again, zero incidents across the board. Thurgood Marshall, for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, they had one incident. It was just an increase of one. Other, they had one and then it was an increase of one, no H I Bs. For the three-year comparison, we're looking at the district from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, there has been fifty-four incidents in the district. During the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year, it has been twenty-eight incidents. And during the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year, it has been twenty-two incidents. Other have included thirty-two during twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-two is thirty-two. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, forty-seven. And this year, when we're talking about others, we're talking, it has been ninety-six, which is for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. H I B, we've had, it was one for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. And that, I think, is that or did it did it did it end? I think that was it. Are there any questions for me?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How confident are we in the accuracy of the reporting of all of the of the numbers and the incidents?
So I'm glad that you said that. Going forward, we're definitely looking into that, making sure we are that we are reporting it correctly because we might not have been in the past, it might not have been being reported correctly. So going forward, we're definitely going to make sure that it is being reported correctly and that we are listing the incidents as they are. So going forward, that will be corrected. And luckily, this is just from the first, this is from September to December. So I'm confident that going forward, it's going to be corrected.
And I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you any idea of the percentage of incidents or reports where either the victim or the offender is the same person? Are we seeing?
What I will do is write that down because that's definitely a good, something that the department definitely needs to look at. So I will definitely write that down to make sure that to to make sure, yes, that we're writing that down. In fact, Lauren, do me a favor, write that down. Write that down. We're going to make sure that we want to see if it's the same offender by the same. That's what you you said, your question, I want to make sure I get it right. You want to make sure that, what is it? I want to make sure I get it right.
Two things, it's both, are we seeing repeat offenders?
Yes.
And whether or not the disciplinary action is is increased. And number two, are certain children being victimized? Are we seeing repeat offenses?
So are we saying are the offenders the same and are the victims the same? And are the, yes, ma'am. Got, thank you. I will look into the department would definitely look into that. Any other questions for me? Also, just to let you guys know, you should have received the H I B report for April and May. It should be in your binders. Did you receive the H I B reports for April and May? You haven't? Just to give you a couple of context, there were four H I B reports filed in the month of April. Two were unfounded. One was founded for two of the offenders and one was founded for one of the four offenders. Some of the actions, like you were saying, some of the actions that were taken by the school, they met with the guidance counselors, parents were contacted and they received detention and counseling and restorative meetings were given to those individuals. For the month of May, there were three H I B reports founded. Two were filed, two were founded, one was unfounded and two were founded. And again, the actions that were taken by the school were school counseling, student conference, and parents mediation was also given to those students.
Ms. Jackson Byers.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Really quick, on the H I B report.
Yes.
Just so I get some context, I don't see where, it doesn't say which school. Is that is that on purpose?
Where it says case? Do you see where it says case?
What does it say?
On the case, it says ten. That's the that's the school right there where it says case.
Right, I see it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. And then the other thing, just for everyone's education, when when you're saying other, can you give an example of of what other?
So when you when we talk about other, that it's when a disciplinary action or an infraction has taken place in which a student might have had to be removed, meaning that they were, meaning that they were removed, meaning that they were either suspend in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, removal to an alternative educational setting. So that's when you say so their infraction that took place at that time, it led to either I S S or out-of-school suspension. So that's what the other, that's what that means.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Let's get to the report of the committee chairs and we'll just go right down the line. Superintendent's afterwards. All right, so let's see, Mr. Remy isn't here yet. So why don't we start with Ms. Glassman and Finance Committee?
Finance Committee continued to meet to talk about the budget, to talk about the amount of funding that would be available under the supplemental stabilization bills and the the programs that the administration. Sorry. Would you let me start over?
Go for it.
Okay. So we continue to talk about the budget. We talked about the funding, the cutting in-state aid, the additional amounts that we would get under the supplemental stabilization aid legislation, the changes that the district would make in programming and staffing to address the shortcomings in order to still be able to provide a comprehensive education to the students. We also approved the use of two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars from in income from the Asbury Park Information Technology Center to help shore up some holes in in the budget.
Okay. Let's go to policy. The Policy Committee met on May sixteenth at six-thirty. We revisited a recommended change to Regulation seven five one zero, which is the use of school facilities. We agreed to the following changes, which was to move, remove Class Two organizations that no longer use and change Class Two users to pay to use fees. And this is happening, we agreed on this policy and these change due to the fact of budget cuts and things that we needed to do for the budget. Yeah. Once the board approves, the business office will send letters to Class Two users explaining the reason why this was done. Okay, great. And again, this is, you know, some of the austerity measures that we have to put in place because of because of these budget cuts. It's, you know, it's sad to hear that we have to do that, but, you know, everyone's got to pay in terms of any fees or anything like that. And, you know, that's part of tightening our belts. So thank you, Mr. Pennick. You're also, you could do curriculum instruction as well?
Yep.
Thank you.
Curriculum instruction met and there are seven items on the agenda today that we spoke about. The first item was applying for the New Jersey Schools Insurance Group Safety Grant. The grant amount is two thousand dollars. Also, we talked about submitting for the two thousand twenty-four Cops Office School Violence Prevention Program Grant. This is a competitive program that provides funding to improve security at schools. We also spoke about the E S L Summer Enrichment Program that's going to begin July first through July twenty-fifth for the summer. And the estimated program cost will depend on the subsequent student participation. We spoke about Penn Foster and that the service that we use in the summertime for our students. We spoke about partnering with the S S I Data Solutions to manage the S I S data. And we spoke about some great school trips that are happening right here at the end of the school year. And we also spoke about the two thousand twenty-four Special Education Extended School Year Program at Bradley Elementary, which is July first through August fifteenth.
Okay, great. And just just upon the clarification, we put in amendment, what do you call that? I always forget what it's called.
Addendum.
An addendum, thank you. So just so you know that the summer program, sometimes these words escape me, the summer programs are going to be taking place. Our programs, meaning pre-K and E S Y, will be taking place at Thurgood Marshall. We just made that decision yesterday. We wanted to finalize that so we could get things out to families because I know families were anxious about summer. Bradley will handle with Boys and Girls Club will handle K to eight here at Bradley Elementary School, just so you know. And the city rec program will run out of M L K and Thurgood Marshall as well. So we covered all the bases. I think our kids are fully covered.
What about pre-K?
Pre-K will be at Thurgood Marshall. Yes, okay. Thurgood Marshall. And you'll see things going out today and tomorrow. By next week, you should be getting a fly.
Thank you. Mr. Remy, perfect timing. Would you like to report out on buildings and grounds or do you need a second? And Shade has something, so Dr. Magzud?
In behalf of Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, P T O, I'd like to make an announcement to please join us on Friday, May thirty-first, from six P M. to eight P M. for at Bradley Beach Bowling. We have a fundraising for all the families and children. The tickets are twenty dollars and it includes two hours of bowling, shoe rental, pizza, and drink. And. drink, and a wonderful time. So, please, if you'd like to take a picture of the poster, it came home with every kids, I believe, last week, but if you'd like to take a picture of it, please join us, we're trying to raise money for our PTO. Ms. Nina and Sabrina couldn't be here, so I'd like to invite everybody, it's open to everybody, with kids or without kids, just come, pay $20 for a ticket, and have a good time.
Dr. Magzud, can you just repeat the date and the time for everybody?
Friday, May 31st, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, at Bradley Beach Bowl, 1217 Main Street, Bradley Beach. And we will have basket raffles and lots of fun stuff.
Cool, great. All right, Mr. Remy. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rogers.
You wanna go, you wanna go? I can go ahead. Mr. Ruiz, Mr. Ruiz. I'm sorry. Right now, yeah, no, no, one of the things, have you been in touch with the summer rec program for all activities that our kids can do with the city? And how can we get all that information out to what they're doing, what's going on? Is there any possible way of doing that?
Absolutely, we generally, they send us the flyers, and we make sure they go out to the, the schools. And like I said, yesterday, sitting with the leadership, we were able to finalize everything, so now, you'll start seeing things go out, starting, I know today, we started sending and posting for the preschool. Tuesday, next week, we're gonna start sending everything out for not only Boys and Girls, but the city recreation program as well.
Okay.
I work very closely with Alicia Floyd on that.
Just so you know, the city's already advertised and asked for kids to sign up. They are on their social media in the last few weeks.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
May I also add that at our last meeting, I gave Mr. Jabino a flyer of what the city is offering through recreation, and he signed it and said that he'd make sure each school sent it out.
That's the form that they have been sending out. That's what Ms. Luzinski's talking about. That's the same form, yes. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Remy.
Buildings and Grounds Committee, we met May 16th, talked about the central office exit relocation, wanna move by June 30th of this year, 2024. The current landlord's attorney contacted, to contact the district attorney, want us to hold us to the 120-day notice, and we'll push the date to August of 2024. We also talked about the tennis initiative, the update of the $100,000 proposed amount from the tennis initiative contractor, does not include fixing the entire base, fence, new sleeves, net, and walkway. We also revisited recommendation and changes from the Buildings and Ground Department for the use of the facility request. We'll talk about that in policy and committees. And we also talked about the Advery Little League, the $13,000 that they donated has not been received as of today. They sent a letter, it included stipulations as to what the district is to do with the funds and what the contractor to do and use. Buildings and Grounds would like Mr. Sosa, Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, to contact the APLL President for further clarification. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay. We still haven't gotten that, any word from, from the Little League, right? Okay.
Mr. Remy, is there any talk about what we're gonna do with Bangs Avenue? Are we, you know, look around to start as a group, just looking to see what we can do with the building to utilize it?
We did touch on that a little bit, just trying to see the things that we can do. I know we mentioned letting like the community, certain things happen there, like programs and whatnot, we just gotta revisit it again and really execute. But thank you for that. We gotta stay on that, we can't just let that building, you know, deteriorate.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Remy. Let's see here. So, we could do a review of regular meeting agenda items, and then, from there, open up to public participation. Ms. Sabina?
I'm a little confused.
Tell us you have superintendent's report.
We're gonna do the superintendent's report.
It's basically agenda items, right? So, you got it.
In place of agenda items, correct. All right, first of all, I wanna congratulate our 15 Dream Academy students for graduating with their associate's degree from Brookdale Community College on May 9th. I hope they all achieve all their hopes and dreams. I'd also like to thank Ms. Margot Wright, Ms. Tracy Cobb, and Mr. Ruiz for keeping that program running and helping these students achieve their goals of graduating Brookdale Community College. We're gonna continue that program in the future, because I think, we believe it's very, very important. We've been preparing for the reconfiguration of the elementary schools, I've met with special education staff, early childhood staff, and schedules are being created for all buildings as we speak. We still hold our weekly principals' meeting, and in those meetings, we've talked about the scheduling, preparing for 24-25 school year, we've discussed staffing. So, I wanna thank you for the principals, to the principals, because they've been doing double duty, working on each other's schedules when they don't have to. But I ask them to, and they've been working hard with that, so I appreciate it. Last month, we started with our district consultants, we had Bobby Ashley here, he's a consultant that has been working, gonna be working with our principals, working on instruction, creating instructional leaders, working with our instructional coaches, working with our teachers, so we can take what we do in the classroom to a larger level. We need to work on instruction, we need to do the right thing by our students, and he's gonna prepare us for that. I work very closely with him, we've already planned out what's gonna happen, starting in July, August, and then into September. We have Dr. Callan Moreno here, who's been working with our special ed program and department to ensure that reports are done properly, and ensure that our students are provided with everything they need to be successful. She's working on the X-Aid as we speak, which is due tomorrow, so she'll have that done. Is it done? She finalized, okay, she finalized it today. There are a lot of things that need to be looked at in that department, and she's gonna be making those corrections as we move forward. I continue to have my weekly meetings with Les Richards, the county superintendent. We discuss the shortfalls, you know, as far as money is concerned, and what we look for and what I look to do in the future. I've been constantly communicating with Senator Gopau to ask for assistance for the district in any way he can. So, basically, I've been asking him for money for the district. And so, I'm constantly calling him, constantly talking to him, and he's, you know, he's looking to see how he can help us out, how to bring more funds back into this district. This past weekend, I was part of the community, I was judging the Asbury Park Scott Talent Program, which was last Saturday, which was a fantastic program I'd like to actually bring into the district. Instead of having it at a community center, why not bring it here and have our own students participate in that? We had young students, our students, that were singing, reading poems at this event, it was fantastic, and they had a chance to show them, show the community their talents. We celebrated our Teacher of the Year, Teacher Appreciation Week, each building's celebrated. I did a little celebration for them as well, and I wanna thank our teachers for all the hard work they have done. I created an attendance appeal committee to correct the attendance issues at our buildings. This appeals committee is made up of administrators, teachers, and the attendance officers. We have corrected, out of 30, 30 attendance issues, we have corrected about 25 of those issues, to make, to ensure that we have followed board policy and our procedures are correct, and students are gonna be able to move on to the next grade level. We confirmed the move to sexual office, as Mr. Remy said, we're gonna be moving out of the sexual office, it's gonna save us about $270 next year. We tried to get out by June 30th, but they're pushing us to August, but we will start that move in a couple of weeks, and we'll be out and ready to, ready to set our camp at MLK, and we'll move from there. And again, it's gonna save us $270, $270,000, which we shouldn't be spending, we should be keeping it in-house and spending it on our, our students. I have visited our pre-K schools outside the district, and I realized that they have been ignored, and that we need to help them build their programs. I walked into a building, and they said, wow, we've never had an administrator come here and talk to us. I was there for about 45 minutes, just to sit and talk, and they were amazed, and the teachers were amazed that I was there. So, that's something we need to do, and we will be doing in the future. Again, as, as a result of the funding cuts, we faced staff reduction of 34 staff members, which will impact all our programs, which in turn will impact all our students. Therefore, I'm urging everyone in the community, staff members included, board members, contact our state senators, let them know what is happening. Yes, we received $1.8 million back from the state, $950,000 of that is going to the charter schools, so we get half. And then, about $450,000, $500,000 need to, we need to use on programs, because we can have the money to use on those programs. That leaves me about $350,000, $400,000 to bring back whatever staff I can, and I was able to bring back five staff, one, two, three, four staff members that were let go. They will be coming back, and their names are on the list. Lastly, I would like to thank Ms. Catherine Blades, she's a special education supervisor who has been let go this year due to funding cuts. But with that, even though she's being cut, she continues to show up to work every day, doesn't take her sick days. She performs all her duties and is still working for our students. Ms. Blades is a consummate professional, and I'd like to thank her publicly for all the work she has done. Thank you, Ms. Blades. That concludes my report.
Mr. President? I just had a question in regards to the superintendent's report. He mentioned attendance, that's part of Policy and Regulation 5600. That's a mandated policy and regulation that has to be approved by the board before it's implemented, and I haven't seen a change in that, on any of the policy committee summaries. And is that in process so the board can approve it before it's implemented, or has it already been implemented?
We didn't change anything to the attendance policy. The attendance policy was not being followed correctly by an administrator, therefore, I had to put together a committee to review that policy, review our students, review all the documentations, so it followed our policy. So, we didn't change anything to the district attendance policy.
Thank you for that clarification, that's why I had the question.
I also have a question. Thank you for the report, by the way. In regard to the charter schools, do we get any updates with the verifications? Because you said we get, we're getting 1.8, but charter schools are getting half of that.
Yeah, we're actually setting up shop at the charter schools, hopefully next week. I mean, we're gonna go there, we're gonna sit there, and we're gonna ask parents.
Like picket or something? What you about to, picket? A picket line or something?
No, we're gonna ask them to go sit in their buildings and have their parents come with the documentation to show that they go there, because they're not, they're, some are refusing to come back here. So, we're gonna go there and ask them to, can we sit there, can we verify our students? Because they don't wanna come to us. We've been directed by counsel, who's, what's that? We're working, not, not, not Adam Weiss, but our insurance carrier to try to get in there. We've also been asked by the Department of Education and the county superintendent to go sit in their building and verify our students.
What day are you doing this?
We're looking to do it next week, we will let you know. Would you like to come?
I'm off Tuesday.
All right.
Also, I wanna bring up and ask the Vice President, I think we ought to be sitting in the State Commissioner's office, and I would hope that we can get the President, the Superintendent, I talked to the mayor, I would like our board leadership, our Finance Committee, to actually send a direct letter to the Superintendent, I mean, Commissioner, and ask for a meeting, and detail all these issues that we're sitting here addressing that are affecting our district. And if we can get that out immediately, because I think we should be talking to them to explain why the policy is, we have to find out whether we are supposed to be paying for kids that may or may not be in our district, and shortchanging the children here of opportunities for this, and other issues in the state policy on understanding how S2 affected this district dramatically, when we have penthouses and ocean, on our oceanfront, not paying any taxes into our school district. So, I, I would like to formally ask that this letter be sent from the President and our Superintendent to meet with the State Commissioner and let him tell me, or tell us, why we have to go out and fin, and, and, and sit in, sit in charter schools to find out whether or not we're paying for funding for kids that aren't even in our district, and they're, they're able to actually recruit kids to be on their basketball team to win a championship.
Yeah, and let me also say, in terms of what you were saying about folks that don't pay into the school district, those same folks are counted and calculated into the funding formula. So, the state looks at Asbury Park and says, wow, this is a much richer town, they can afford to pay into their school district, we don't need to give them as much money. And they're not taking into account that they're also including folks that, that don't pay into the, the school district, just on their income, not their property, their income. So, but I do like that idea about a letter, if it's gonna come from the board, we need to take a vote on that, though, right?
I would suggest, to the extent that the board would like a letter to be sent, to the effect that Mr. Rogers indicated, that you take a vote on it.
Okay.
My vote is yes, so we can start it off.
One second.
Need a motion? There's no motion.
No, I was only kidding, I'll make a motion, but everybody knows what my vote's gonna be.
So, you're making a motion?
Yes.
To formulate a letter to the State Commissioner to discuss essential financial issues that are affecting our, our district.
And to request a meeting with board leadership.
Request with board leadership and anyone supportive in our community. And like I said, I talked to the mayor, he says he's on board.
And the names of the people that are determined to be board leadership are?
The board leadership, the board leadership is the President, Vice President, and the Financial Committee is Ms. Glassman, myself, and Joe Grillo, who actually is a board leadership. So, I think that's less than a quorum to have a meeting with the State Commissioner.
Okay, we have a motion on the table.
One second. Mr. Rogers' motion?
Could we roll, Ms. Brown, on that?
So, I have a motion to write a letter to the State Commissioner requesting a meeting with board leadership in regards to our status.
The board leadership and, and the The board leadership and, and the finance committee. So I just want to make clear, when, 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 in terms of board leadership, what we're talking about is the president and the vice president and that's it. That's why we want to distinguish board leadership from the finance committee. We're asking, you were asking for board leadership and the finance committee, right? Okay.
Who's writing?
Clarify that that letter's, it's board leadership, the finance committee, the superintendent, and the mayor.
Does the mayor know this?
Yeah, I talked to the mayor. He says he will be at any meeting we want to discuss to talk about.
Oh, so you already decided this, okay.
I asked him, would he be willing to, to attend with us?
Ms. Glassman? Ms. Lesinski?
I'm abstaining. I need to see the letter, but I doubt we will, so I'm gonna abstain.
Dr. Maxut?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
I'm abstaining since I'm not a member of the board leadership nor am I on the finance committee, so I will abstain.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So let's go to public participation.
Does it pass?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. So let's go to public participation. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session and all public comments must be directed to the board president or the presiding officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the presiding officer and provide their name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Hello, me. Sheila Brazil, 1200 Jefferson Street, Asbury Park. Y'all can't hear me? I bet my kids can't hear me at my house. Sheila Brazil, 1200 Jefferson Street, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Hear me now? Okay, you have a attendance committee of the, you know, superintendent? I think you should include parents on that committee because you know, that way, you know, they could also have their input of what, you know. So when you have like a committee, back in the day, we used to include parents. Y'all leaving that part out. Start back including the parents and I think things might get a little bit better and run a little bit smoother. At least they know, so they could take it out and tell everybody. And I see we losing staff, but you creating positions. Are those needed positions or somebody? I do say we don't have any money, but, and I volunteer to go with you to sit in at the charter academy school too when you get ready to go. Just call me, okay? Thanks, have a nice one.
It's been brought to my attention, actually about 45 minutes ago, that there's a group of folks that want to fix the high school baseball field at no cost to the district. And I'm just wondering what I have to do to help expedite that.
What do you mean, there's a group of people that want to fix, do you know it?
Yeah, so there's about, the estimate's somewhere between $5,000 and $7,000 to get the baseball field up to standard. And there's a group of people, Laquanas in the Little League, that want to be able to do all the work and hire people in to fix it. And we just don't know how to go about getting that done.
Sure, so that, I, I think that's something that we, we spoke about in terms of the donation that the Asbury Park Little League made to us in order to do certain improvements. So, but, I mean, if there's a different group of people, I would say, you know, you could email the superintendent, jabino m at apboe.org. Sorry, Mark. But that's, and, and that way, that's, that's really the, the proper procedure to, to get that going.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, thank you, Jean.
My name is Milagro Gomez. I work for statewide education organized committee here in Asbury Park. I just had a few questions and if you, you don't have to answer if you don't have the answer, but hopefully you do have some kind of answer. You mentioned that you are, that you are offering recreation for the children in the classes in the public schools here in Asbury Park. Is that so?
Are you talking about in, in the, the summer program?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Are you gonna be offering enrichment programs also throughout the year for the children? This coming year, hopefully?
Mr. Jabino, did you want to talk about the after-school?
Have you ever heard of that, enrichment?
Is this something specific you're asking about enrichment? Is there something you have in mind?
They offered in other schools prior years. My children also went to public schools. It was, they had, they had art, music.
So our schools do offer art and music in all of our schools? That is offered, that's never, not been offered?
But enrichment, they're offered in the curriculum, like the enrichment, they are being offered?
If you're talking about art and music, we offer art and music. So if you're being specific, yes, we offer, we also, there's enrichment activities that go on in the after-school program as well. We're partnered with the Boys and Girls Club to do that. So yes, we, we do offer not only extracurricular activities, like I said, music and, and art, but also during the after-school program, they do enrichment activities as well.
Grass, culinary, all of that also, correct?
Culinary, no. We do not offer culinary.
Okay, for the older children, like sixth graders, I was figuring. Thank you. Okay. Also, what can be done to save our public schools? How could we work to gather, together to heal our schools and communities? So what is currently the schools are about to close due to charters? Are they taking over?
Ma'am, what we could do is, if you could finish all your questions and then, you know, if, if there's-
Okay, that's a question. Because I just wanted to say something on my behalf. I've been working here in the district and the area for over nine years. And ever since COVID, I've seen everything just dwindle. And I don't think it's the teachers' fault. I think it's us. So I just wanted to say that we need to work to heal from our communities. If we could work together, we could make changes. And we have to believe that. And I wanted to say, we can't give up. Don't give up. Because it's gonna be a battle and we cannot give up. And I wanted to say also to Mr. Tracy Rogers, I think it's important, like they had mentioned, to write to the senator in order for this to be heard. We need to fight for our children. And it's not about the dollar bill. And it's not about who says what or who said this. It doesn't matter. What matters is the children have-
Sorry, your time is up.
Okay, that's what matters. And thank you, everyone. Okay, bye.
Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna close public session, public participation. All right. State monitors report.
My report was given during the budget.
Okay. All right. So Ms. Brown, why don't we do the acceptance of minutes? Make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held April 25th, 2024.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lesinski?
Abstain.
Dr. Maxut?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Abstain.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Someone make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of closed session meeting, bless you, just held April 25th, 2024.
I didn't, was the minutes handed out to anybody?
Yes.
Yes.
That's okay, I wasn't, I wasn't here. I just danced, I didn't see minutes.
Does anyone have a second? Okay, great, thanks, bud.
Yes.
Ms. Lesinski?
Abstain.
Dr. Maxut?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Abstain.
Mr. Rogers?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Jabino?
I would like a consent agenda from B1 through B11.
Can I get a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Put your mic. Oh, sorry. Mr. Jabino, this list here, is this on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know which number that is? I don't remember seeing it.
So, all right, it's, it's the appointment list, the reappointment list, right?
It's towards the back of the white pages. It's after all the job descriptions.
Speaking of the addendum, is that where it is or?
No, it's before pages C1. Before that, it's about five pages before that. It's on the white pages.
Look at page B13A where it says upon the recommendation to approve the attached addendum to the list of staff.
So that's the attached addendum for that item?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I see that on, I guess it's, since that stuff has changed, it's number two on B1, the job creation. Do I have the number right? Because it did change this afternoon. Job creation, the job creation descriptions, that's it. So we have six new administrative positions you're creating?
No, we're not. It's just the titles that we, positions we already have.
So these are existing titles?
Right now, all supervisors under one title. This separates them.
Oh, I thought there was a, there was a science supervisor or is it all curriculum? Was it all curriculum?
No, they were all supervisors of curriculum and instruction. That's one title.
So each one of these is separating the job description into who they, what they're actually doing? Now, my other question is the math and science supervisor, how the job descrip, just, well, let me go back a second. Just so you know, the dates on A, D, and E of those job descriptions is incorrect. The approval dates, they weren't approved in March, I think it says March 14th, I think. That's the incorrect dates, just so you know. And then I had the job description, teaching math, science supervisor. I think you should read the description, you might want to pull it. It's incorrect. It says something about, what does it say? Something about special ed. It doesn't say math and science. There's only something about, I think it's science in there, there's no math. You may want to review that one. Adoption dates are May 14th on the three I mentioned.
Ms. Lesinski, you're talking about math, the math, the teaching math, science supervisor?
Yeah, there's a, it says special ed in the second.
Is that typo?
No, I think it needs to, the description needs to include math. It only says science. Further down, it says teach math and science.
Yeah, teach math and science.
Yeah, but in the beginning, it says first science, what the science supervisor does, and then it says special ed, not math.
So can, can we just amend that and, and say where, where it solely says teaching math or it solely says teaching science, that it, that we amend that to say teaching math, science?
You have to look at description, Joe. I don't think you can change it today. I think HR needs to take a look just to make sure the job description and the duties that are correct. So when you do approve it, the person that's going to be applying for it has the correct description and duties.
Okay, we can, we can, we can pull it. Must be some typos in there. We can absolutely pull it. Yeah, basically, these positions are just giving titles to the supervisor.
So what you're doing is you're adding these titles and are you eliminating the other job descriptions or is this replacing that?
Yes, it replaces, there's no other job description except supervisor of curriculum.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm talking about this in public, but there's a lot of information I don't have, so I, I wanted to straighten it out so I kind of understood. And I'm sure the people are maybe a little confused too. I, I don't know.
No, you're fine.
I, okay, I would still propose that with the edits, to reflect that it's math slash science throughout.
No, there's more to it. There's a description in there about special ed and it's not about a special ed.
I understand that. I understand that, if you delete the word ELA and you replace it with math slash science throughout, I think that we could quickly review it and, and improve it, if you want to pull it, pull it, but I think we could approve it tonight.
Well, we can, we can do either, we can pull it, it isn't, it's not going to affect anything, it's just more that, um, I was changing everybody's, putting everybody under their correct, uh, title, so if you teach ELA, that's your ELA supervisor, instead of just a supervisor of curriculum instruction, but we can pull it and fix them all.
Yeah, I think that'd be-
Absolutely, that's not a problem, we can do that.
The other question I had on, um, it's now, uh, B2 number four, the, um, ESY program, why are we not using grant funding this year, it's coming out of the general budget? And, and there's no cost here also, how much is the program going to cost for the staff?
The cost is on the following page per staff member, and we don't have any more ESER funds, we don't have any more of grant funding, so this will be paid with the $1.82 million that we're getting back, so we have to fund the ESY program, we have to fund credit recovery program as well at the high school.
Okay, so that extra money we're getting, uh-
Is for these programs, yes.
Okay, hold on, I think I have another question. I just want people to know how important it is that, uh, some of these grants, especially ESER funds and things we've gotten before, we don't have anymore, and this is all coming out of the general budget now, which is tax dollars, so, you know, proper tax dollars that you get if we don't get extra money. The other question I had, if I may, is, uh, B4, B4 number six, the, um, step increase for the, uh, coach, is that a mistake? Do they have that experience, or, uh, I'm not sure, I, I, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, he's had several years of coaching here, he was placed on the wrong step.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, any other questions?
Wait, back to this, um, the job creation and new job descriptions, so is it, like, six? So would it be six new more people, or are these people already in these positions, and we're just twitching their names, searching the title on me?
No, not six new positions. So I'm just switching the titles. What, what, um, positions need to be filled with that, a position that were, people that are not here, we have people that are retired, yes, but they're not, I'm not creating all new positions. Basically, what I did was, we have supervisors of instruction, some teach math, some teach science, some teach ELA, but it doesn't say that, the job description is curriculum and instruction, so now if you're ELA, you'll now be an ELA supervisor.
So we just put them to a certain specialty.
Yes.
My question, I'm sorry, the 45-day program humanities, teaching supervisor, who would that, what is, like, somebody's doing that now, but is that what they're doing?
I'll be moving people around to do that, but, uh, that, right now, we can't, uh, that's personnel.
I, I understand that, but that, is it a new title, or is it, are you adding something, or is it that person doing those duties at this point, just labeled as a supervisor of curriculum, or whatever?
No, no one's doing that, those duties at this time, but we have people in those, in that supervisory position, that can do those, do that.
So that is a new, um-
That would be a new, that would be new, because we had, we had, uh, humanities would cover supervisor of, which we had in the past, of any, the art, music, PE, uh, classes.
And then the supervisor of special services, that's new, isn't it?
That's new, uh, well, yeah, it's new, the, again, I, I can't go into, uh, personnel to go-
I don't know, I'm not asking about-
Well, in order to explain that, that's what I would have to do.
Well, we eliminated director of special services, so I guess there's now a supervisor of special services, and then we're also hiring consultant, whose duties mirror what the director's social serv- uh, special services did, so I'm not quite sure, so that, so the supervisor of special services is a new position.
We already have a supervisor of special services, now we've just increased responsibilities, but we already had that.
Do we, do we need to go into exec- to clarify this?
No, so I'm not asking about personnel, I'm asking about titles.
And to the extent that we're going to go, if we were to go into executive session, we'd have to have those individuals-
People would have to be rised.
And I don't believe that any of them were rised, so, um, you know, we're, we're unable to do that anyway.
No, but right now, I mean, the lengthy discussion, I mean-
I'm done, I'm, I'm, I'm done, I won't ask any more questions.
How about we just move it to next, like, move it to the next meeting?
Well, this is just a clarification-
I'm just saying, there's so much questions, and, you know.
The one, the one question I think-
Mr. Remy, don't worry about it, okay?
No.
They can move forward.
Mr. Remy, uh, the question you were asking, with, I understand, and I've brought this up many times, when we had director of curriculum, that means all the supervisors were basically given that title, my, my thought was, who is responsible for math? And we can pinpoint who's responsible for the English, so I, I see the, the, uh, substance in some of the changes, and if you got other questions, you guys could, because we were never holding people accountable, when we saying we have a broad, you know, everybody's going to do it, and everybody's going to every school, and now they're focusing on one area, that means, that, that, that holds accountability to when we ask for those stats and, and determination who's focused on that area.
And from what I understand from Mr. Gribino, and what I understand from conversations that have happened, um, this is not creating any new jobs, this is people that already exist, having new titles, simple change.
Yeah, but you have to post these jobs now.
Yeah, I believe we're going to post, I, I would believe we're going to post.
Yeah, I mean, there, we have some retirements, that we do have to fill.
Wait, so if you post it, so you're going to post it publicly, for people to apply?
Sure.
You have to, and you can't already have chosen, so I guess you could already choose-
So do they automatically, uh, as you said, they already have these titles, like, they already have these positions, it's a title change, but if you're posting it, then that means anyone can apply, so you will get six new people, right?
These are positions, we have, we've had retirements, that do still need to be filled, so maybe that's, we still got to fill those positions, so, yeah, that we posted for the positions that have retired.
I have a question, but didn't you hire new counseling? You hired, um, Ms. Morano? For one of these positions?
She's a consultant.
Yes, she's a consultant.
Consultant to fix, we, we brought her in to fix issues that were in the special, special ed department, correct, but she's not hired as a district employee.
So we, any other questions? So we have a motion and a second, um, if we need to pull, uh, B1 to F, should I pull my motion, and then-
Withdraw the motion, we made it to the steps with the-
Okay.
Make it for all items except.
Okay, so I'm withdrawing my motion, and, uh, make a motion, uh, for all items that Mrs. Brown mentioned in B, except for B1 to F, which we're pulling, uh, for typo corrections.
Correct the, uh, the date they were approved to.
And to correct the date that would, that was approved, that they were approved.
Is there a second?
So that's my motion, need a second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Okay. We'll call.
So I have a motion to withdraw the first motion of the consent agenda, and to make it B1 to B11, with the exception of B, B12.
Right, I withdrew my, my previous motion, and then made a motion that was seconded for all the-
Items.
Everything except for B1 to F, yep. B1 to F.
A through F.
Right.
A through F, or F, just F?
B1 to F.
Just F.
Just that one.
Just F?
Teaching math-science supervisor, because there's some corrections that we needed there.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lesinski?
All right, let me see if I can get this right, um, everything is, except for B1, 1A, B2, and 3A, B2, 4A, uh, excuse me, no, I'm, B2, I'm okay, um, B4, 5 and 6A, and then the addendum, B8, number 3, including 9 and 10.
You may have to, you may have to repeat that for me.
You have to repeat it, I have to.
All right, yeah, yes, except for no on B1, A, and B?
Yes, number 2.
2. No. 3A?
Yes.
No.
Correct.
B4, no. 5 and 6, A?
B2, oh no, not that, uh, B4, 5 and 6A, correct.
And B8?
Correct. 3.
9 and 10?
Yeah, including pages 9 and 10, correct.
On the addendum.
Thank you.
Dr. Maksut?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
For the record, I'm recusing myself, that has anything to do with awards, and I'm voting no, page B1, items A and 2, I'm abstaining from B2, item E, B5, item 13.
Yes, no to B1, A, and 2, abstain from B2, B, B5, number 13.
Correct.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. On, well, I'm, uh, let me go with I'm, with I'm abstaining, I'm abstaining from 3, uh, B1.
The whole page, B1?
No, no, no.
Oh, 3.
No, I'm sorry, B2, B, B2.
You're abstaining from B2.
B2, number 4. And B8. B8, B9, B10. And yes for everything else.
Abstaining B2, number 4, B8, B9, and B10.
Um, Mrs. Brown?
Mr. Rogers, can you just confirm that Ms. Brown read that back correctly, before we move on?
B, B2, number 4. The whole page of B8?
Or is it just number 3? Because then that would just include the whole three pages. If it's the, um, reappoint, the reassignment list, that would be B8, number 3, which would cover those pages, subsequent pages, okay, that's what I want to know.
Thank you, Ms. Remy. Uh, can I just bring your attention, uh, Mrs. Brown, could you, uh, just add, I, I just noticed there's one name on B11 that I didn't include in that list, it kind of got cut, I didn't realize that.
So Ms. Lesinski, I'm just, uh, what is it?
I'm just adding that to my vote of no for that particular, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Guillo?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All carry. Can I get a consent agenda for the business section, pages C1 to C10?
Move it. Second. Discussion. Yes, please. Discussion. I'd like the table 10A till after the closed session, I want to have the discussion in there about the appointments of professional services, specifically legal, audit, and insurance broker. Only, only legal is on this agenda, so I'd like to table that till after the discussion and closed session. All right, so, uh, I'll withdraw my motion, uh, and, uh, make a new motion to, uh, for all of C, minus, uh, C4, 10A, which we're going to table. Can I get a second on that, I guess, on that new motion?
Second.
The only, uh, question I had is about number 11, it, it's coming out of, um, general funds also, not a grant or any other title monies.
So I have a motion to withdraw the first motion, with the new one to remove C4, number 10, to table it.
Correct.
Till after executive session.
And now we're in discussion, and, uh, Ms. Lesinski had a question.
She already answered my question.
Oh, you did? Okay, sorry.
Ms. Glassman?
Wait, 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 one more thing, one more, just, I'd like to remind the board, before you, you were calling to vote, or, or she had a question? No, go ahead, discussions.
No, I had another question.
Oh, okay, Ms., let, let, let Ms. Glassing go first, then I'll go. Oh, you did already?
Yeah, she answered my question, I had one on C8, number 19.
So, I just want to remind the board, oh, another question.
The question with the trans, transfer of funds into, um, the summer program, et cetera, are we, um, supplementing or supplanting?
No, that's not supplementing.
I'll have to get back to you, Ms. Lesinski, I'm sorry.
Well, if we're, uh, supplanting, we can't, uh, do that, I just, that's why I had the question. I mean, since it's a summer program, you could, I think we could wait till next month, or no, or is it starting?
The summer program, correct me if I'm wrong, the summer program last year was funded by ESER, not local funds.
Yes.
So you're not, like, transferring immigrant to some, to cover that portion of the summer program, that's not supplanting local funds, it's replacing another federal program that funded it.
Okay, just as long as it's not, I just, that's what I want a clarification.
Okay. Before the board votes, just to remind you, the college achieved is included in the bill list. That's all. That's all.
Oh, let me see, a question about the college achieve, do we know? Oh, it's not.
What's that, well, it's still discussion.
Yeah, that's, I mean, the discussion, it's college achieve, how much more do we have to pay for this ending year? The college achieve?
The May payment is for the June month.
Yeah, this, yeah.
And Ms. Lesinski, the, the question about the transfer is on B5, the ESL program?
Okay.
Number 11.
B5, 11.
I have 2 questions. So the first question is, um, C4, um, 11, shouldn't the, the period be beginning May 1, 2024, through June 30, 2024, not 25? For the $18,000, it, it doesn't make sense.
Yes.
Okay, no, it is 24, no, this portion only covers June.
It should be June 30, 2024, and then, and June will do, if we need her services passed for the next school year, then we'll add it on.
Okay.
So it should, I'll change it to reflect 2024.
Okay. And then the next question that I have is on C8, 17, the use of, uh, facility fee, the waiver request. It says that it, uh, in accordance with policy 7510, but we just agreed that that policy is going to require the payment of the fees, and yet here we are moving to waive it, so I'm a little confused at where we're standing tonight, um, how we're addressing it.
Well, I think we need to, I think we need to vote, we have, we need to vote to either approve the waiver or, or to reject it.
Okay.
Also, another question. Can we do C1, number 4 separately?
Change the motion.
Yeah.
Mr. Rogers, there's a motion on the floor, um, so to the extent that any board member, uh, would like to have that separated out, uh, my suggestion would be that the motion be withdrawn, and then a new motion being made.
If it pleases the board, then I'll, I'll withdraw it and make a new, make another motion, um, to, uh, do you?
Yes, I, I want to make a motion to, uh, separately take out C1, number 4, because I think a, uh, I think we need to individually discuss whether or not we want to think about what this final budget adoption is. And I, right now, because of S3002 that the governor signed, it does give us an opportunity to not pass that budget right now, and wait for maybe a discussion with the super, I mean, uh, commissioner on changes that we want to get made to ask for additional money. The S2, the, the Senate bill, uh, S3002 gave districts that were losing money an opportunity to pass their budget after, uh, the state budget is being passed. I, I'm not asking for that, I mean, if we decide not to, or we decide to table it, for another week, I don't mind coming back after we get some word from the commissioner, whether we have the discussion, but the governor did give us, the state legislature and the governor did give us an opportunity to, uh, not pass our budget prior to the state budget being passed. And as anybody know, in this state, nobody knows what happens going into a budget year. And, you know, maybe I'm a wishful thinker, hopeful thinker, um, that we may, we may get a meeting to discuss some things that may help us out. So I don't want to pass this budget without at least taking another shot at, at the commissioner's office, or any other state legislative opportunities that may come up.
So, Mr. Rogers, then, is your motion to approve all items C1 through C10, with the exception of C1, 4, and C4, 10? Is that your motion?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
So, board members, the motion that's on the floor has all items in the C-section, with the exception of the budget and the appointment of professionals.
But we will vote on the budget as a separate item this evening, yes?
If that's what the board would like to do, yes. All right, any further discussion on the new motion?
I do, I have a question about C4, item 11.
The budget.
I just want to make sure, correct date is May 1, 2024, through June 30, 2024, not 25.
Board members, um, Mr. Gerbino advised, and thank you for, for asking for clarification, Dr. Maksud. Mr. Gerbino advised that it's a typographical error, C4, 11. It should be the period May 1, 2024, through June 30, 2024.
Yes.
So it's, it's a month and change.
Can I ask a question about that also? I'm sorry, since it is a professional service, a consulting contract, the state monitor approved this to start May 1, because the board hasn't, hasn't had, okay, that's just one, one answer, thank you.
So I have a motion from C1 to C10, with the exception of C1, number 4, and C4, number 10. Ms. Glassman?
Yes, except, no as to C1, A, as to college achieve. And, um, and no as to C8, number 17, only as to the, uh, waiver of the custodial fees. In other words, I would approve the wa, waiver of the rental fee, but not the custodial fee on C8, 17.
You'll waive other fees except for custodial?
Yes, I, I would waive the rental, but not the custodial fees.
And we can do that in the vote, right? Like bifurcate it.
Is that possible?
I guess it was like a question, make sure that we're doing things right, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Lesinski?
Yes, and everything of, vote no on the tentative, but, oh, that's not on here. Abstain on C4, number 11, and also C8, uh, only waive custodial fees on number 17.
No to everything on C8?
C8, just to, uh, wa, waive, uh, the room fa, fees and pay custodial fees. And I also want to abstain from, um, 1A, uh, college achieve, or vote no on college achieve, if there's a payment.
Thank you. Dr. Maksud?
Yes to everything except C1, 1A, and abstain college achieve, and abstain on C4, 11.
Dr. Maksud?
So no?
Did you want to, did you mean to vote no on everything?
No, vote yes on everything except
C1, 1A?
C1, 1A, and abstain on C4, 11.
To all the bills on C1, A?
No, it's just, just the college achieve. C1, 1A, college achieve.
And abstain from C4, number 11?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Penna?
Yes on everything except C1, 1A, anything to do with college achieve?
Yes, no?
No. And no on C8, number 17, the custodial fee being waived.
Thank you, Mr. Remy?
Yes to everything, and no to C1, 1A, college achieve, and C8, 17.
You're saying no to the whole CA, I mean, C8, number 17?
Yeah, to the whole thing, C8, 17.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks?
As I understand it, we pull C1, number 4?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Then my vote is no on college achieve, no on C2, number 5, abstain on C10, number 3.
Abstain C10, number 3? Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
C1, everything except for college achieve, uh, A, C, uh, college achieve, uh, I'm, I'm, you know, the policy on, what is it, C17, I mean, uh,
C8, number 17?
Yeah, C8, 17.
You're voting no?
I'm voting yes, I'm voting yes, to waive, to waive it, everything.
Yes to waive all fees? Mr. Grillo?
Okay, um, so it's going to be yes to everything except C1, 1A, any payments to college achieve, abstain if there's any payments to sustainable jersey, and on, uh, on the fee waiver request, um, we're going to do, let's see, let's see what this question? Yeah, this, which is, which is, uh, the custodial fees stay, and we're waiving the, the
Everything else.
Yes to everything else.
Thank you. Everything passed except for C1, 1A, college achieve payments, and C8, number 17, they have to pay custodial fees.
All right, so, um, motion to go into executive caucus. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act allows for the exclusion from discussion.
We have to vote on C4.
Do we want to vote on the budget now, or after, uh, after executive caucus?
The, the issue is, uh, to the extent that there's any discussion in closed session about the budget, it would have to be appropriately brought into closed session. And, uh, I'm not so sure that a budget discussion is appropriate for closed session to the extent you're not going to be talking about anything that is, um, of a confidential nature, such that it would be excluded under the Open Public Meetings Act. So I would suggest that you at least start a budget discussion, maybe by making a motion in a second, and then having that, um, that item addressed now.
I'll make a motion to approve the tentative budget, C4, on the business agenda.
I need a second?
I'll second that. Discussion?
So the motion is for C1, number 4, for the 24, 25 school year budget adoption.
Yeah.
I can just make a remark prior to the vote?
This is, uh, the period for questions, discussion, comments.
I, I think that we all realize, and, and I've been struggling through all of these finance meetings, um, and all of our discussions at the board, um, about the impact and consequences of the school funding formula, the, the loss in state aid, um, and what this means to our district. There may be opportunities for increased funding, but I think that, and, and under the bills that have been passed, I really won't get another crack at the apple. But I think at this time, we should recognize the, um, huge efforts that have been made by the superintendent, and the administration, and the teachers, and staff, um, to craft a, a full and thoughtful program, um, for our kids with the limited resources that we have available. So I, I think that we should recognize and support the efforts of this district, and the selfless efforts of our teachers to give the kids what we believe is the best education possible, um, with fewer resources. I think that we have, uh, dedicated staff, and parents, and a community that can come together and support this district, can continue to fight for additional funding, but in the meantime, I think that it's important to, um, show the support, um, and strength that we have, um, and the belief that all of us should have, that we can educate our kids regardless of what the funding outcome is. Um, I, I don't think that that means giving up hope, um, and fighting for additional funding, and I think that we have the support of our legislatures, but I think that this is the opportunity to stand up and say, "We can provide an extraordinary education, no matter what you take from us." So I, I would encourage everyone to, to support this budget.
Anyone else? All right, well, I'd just like to echo that sentiment, Ms. Glassman, because it's a lot of pain, it doesn't, you know, we're not celebrating the fact that, you know, we had to cut so much in our, in our workforce, and we recognize and appreciate the fact that our bandwidth and the staff's bandwidth is now incredibly overstretched. And I agree, I think it's time to vote on this budget. I think everyone's worked on it tremendously, and if more funding comes down the pike, and we've got legislators that have an open line of communication, I think, Mr. Gerbino, you said you've spoken to Senator Gopal like 15 times in the past two months, two weeks or something like that? So that's the kind of communication that we need with our state legislators, and I look forward to seeing what extra funding is going to come. But I think in terms of this budget, we've done everything possible to make it work, and, and you're right, it's, it's to defy the odds once again, Asbury Park defying the odds by providing an excellent education despite all these tremendous cuts, so. All right.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
No.
Dr. Maksud?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks? Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Pass.
Executive caucus. So whereas the Open Public Meetings Act allows for the exclusion from discussion at. Oh, okay, I was going to read that, read that, okay. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act allows for the exclusion from discussion at the public portion of a meeting of certain matters as outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters, made and will make such discussion public when a proper conclusion has been reached. Now therefore be it resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education will hold a closed executive session on this date at Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose as outlined and described below, and upon return, action may be taken. I believe it is personnel matters.
Yeah, so the board's going to retire to close executive session for approximately 45 minutes to discuss contracts, personnel negotiations. No, no formal action will be taken in executive session. To the extent that the board is going to take any formal action, it will be done in this room here when the board returns from executive session. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Dr. Maksud?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to come out of executive session? Move it. Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion to adjourn the meeting? Move it.
Move it. Second.
All in favor? I. Have a wonderful night.